Good evening, everyone.
Recording in progress.
This is the special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. It's Tuesday, March 5th, and it's 5:00 PM. It's a special meeting, it's also a study session. And we will start with the roll call, please.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chow is not at the dais yet. Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fruein?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
So the subject for today's study session is revisions to the Cupertino City Council Procedures Manual, and this was tabled from a few months ago, September 6, 2023. And we will start with the staff report. Madam City Manager? Or City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, as the mayor said in her introduction, the item we're hearing today is a review and potential update of the Council Procedures Manual. The manual is adopted by council in February 2023. It did address an identified gap in the city's governance policies. At the time of its adoption, the city attorney was directed to return to council six months later after its adoption to consider potential revisions. That item was brought back in September of last year, and council continued the item for six additional months to give council more experience with working with the rules of procedure and then consider potential revisions at this time. We are now back with the item, which is substantially identical to the version that you considered in September, and the staff report is included in your packet. There are a number of revisions that council may consider to address the efficiency, effectiveness, and transparency of the city council meetings, and some of these, these are identified in your packet, and they are, we'll just walk through them briefly here. So you could consider changes to Section 4 of the manual, which would clarify the distinction between end naming conventions for advisory bodies. This is based on a recommendation of the city's internal auditor. Revisions to Section 5.6, which would incorporate additional training requirements to the manual. Council might also consider a separate training policy. Revisions to Section 8.2 to revise the rules of order to improve efficiency and effectiveness of council deliberations. Potential for revisions to Section 8.3 to formalize or modify the process of written reports that are submitted for council activities. And then, just to update an error in the staff report, there are two sections, just calling out both Section 8.4, and then you'll see on the next slide, Section 8.5, which are italicized here. Consider modifications to procedures for removing items from the consent calendar. Those are addressed in Section 8.4. And then Section 8.5 addresses deliberations procedures, and council might consider potential revisions to that based on the experience of working with the rules for the past years. Finally, a couple more sections. Section 8.8, there are potential for revisions to procedure to improve additional deliberations procedures and procedural rules. And then Section 10, council, there are enforcement provisions in Section 10. Council could consider adding more detail to those enforcement provisions if it was interested in doing so. So the recommended action is to provide input regarding revisions to the City Council Procedures Manual. If, you know, unless the revisions are very limited, I would anticipate this item coming back with specific language for council to approve, hopefully in a streamlined fashion. And so at this time, the city attorney's office is seeking direction on those potential revisions from council, and will return as appropriate based on those revisions. With that, I am available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I'd like to invite our council members to question, to have questions or questions for the city attorney, and we could get five minutes each. So basically, this is asking the city attorney for clarification, or if there is something that needs additional explanation. Five minutes each per council member. I'm not seeing any lights.
This is for question or comment?
Yes, questions for the city attorney.
Yep. I thought most of this past year, we have followed it pretty well. There are a few things that the city attorney mentioned, and I think we could do a little bit more in-depth modification to it. So is this the time to say it, or should we wait until for discussions?
So I would recommend answering, you know, taking questions now, then, you know, going to public comment, and then returning with any proposed revisions after public comment.
Okay. So I do want to say that we had a one-on-one with, no, we had a discussion with city attorney, and so I got most of my questions answered already, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Any other questions for the city attorney? Seeing none. Let's open the session for public comments. Are there any public comments?
Yes, Mayor. I have one request to speak from Community Hall, and currently I see no hands raised, I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please submit a request to speak in the next nine minutes, or raise your hand virtually.
Good evening, City Council. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I'm glad that you're having a study session on this. I have a great deal of concerns about where this manual is going. First of all, let's start off with the efficiency situation. I have been coming to city council meetings since 2002, probably two, and yes, some of the meetings went long, but I see no reason to make, efficiency is not why we're here. You all are doing the public's work. The public is here, giving input and testifying as to how things in the city are affecting our lives. This is why we have elected representatives, et cetera, et cetera, all the way through English history, the Magna Carta, et cetera, how this state, this country was founded. I understand that people want to have efficient meetings, and I understand that. I took parliamentary law in high school. Homestead had a very, very good section on it. But to me, no one ever said to me, parliamentary law is fast. It's not. It's messy. It's dirty. Democracy is a mess. But it is what we have decided to use in the United States unless something else is tossed. It's what I was taught and what I grew up with. So therefore, there is no reason to change it unless there is some reason. I don't see an efficiency reason. Getting to the situation where we're trying to do more to limit the public input, we are verging on trampling on democratic processes here. There was a previous mayor of Cupertino who decided to have public input go down to two minutes, and unfortunately, he got a lot of razzing over it, and it eventually went back to three minutes. I don't see our duty here as trying to have one-hour city council meetings. That isn't the way we run cities. Yeah, maybe we can tighten things up, but I really, really am very, very disappointed in this document. I would like to have the city council members talk about what they did. No, just don't put it in a file. Okay, that's great. But that's how, for the last 24 years, I've learned what the special interest of city council members are. They all have made comments about what they did, who they saw. Also, I don't like the statement, the informational items at the end. I don't know what they're about. Please do not do anything to limit democratic input. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we will move to the requesters on, that are attending virtually. First, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Bedore, followed by Jennifer Sheeran. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. I agree with what Jennifer Griffin's, her comments. I also agree with the training required to add the ethics training, but also I believe that you should also add required Brown Act training/refresher, including changes effective the new year, every year, and Rosenberg's Rules of Order, how a meeting is run. Those are required, and if you want to make your meetings more efficient, I think those two things would go a long way to doing that. Other than that, I don't think there should be any other changes. If written reports are required, then I think you should require it of the city manager and not videos. They're not informative. We used to have a really good exchange where we found out what the city actually was doing. As far as consent items, do not make any changes. I think the current rules have reduced the pulling of items significantly, but still have allowed occasional items to be discussed, which is appropriate. That's the reason for pulling. Keep this as is. Public comment, do not make any changes. The public is already forced to use their oral communication time to address non-agenda items and now informational items. The public is already forced to consolidate their comments on consent items to one three-minute period. If more than three minutes is needed by the public, they must find five people to cede their time. That is very difficult, so it rarely happens now. The mayor has the ability to reduce the time per speaker on an item. These are all things that have reduced public comment. I don't think you need to go any further. And so for that, and I think at the, at the most minimum, a review of this policy every four years, that would give the opportunity of every council member to review it once. I don't think you need it any more frequently than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jean Bedore, followed by Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Carol Stanek. Welcome, Jean.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wait a minute, this is Jean.
Yes, Jean, go ahead, please.
Okay. Okay, my name is Jean Bedore, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. First of all, I would like to compliment the council and staff on a very successful implementation of the council's procedure. I, as someone who has attended city council meetings for years, including the 4:00 AM ones, I really appreciate the fact that you've reduced the number of meetings as well as the length of the meetings. That's been a vast improvement in the last year. And so basically, I'd say this manual is working well. There are some areas that I think should be considered, and that is, it's particularly in the area of the consent calendar. It's painful to sit through 40 minutes for an item that should have just been approved routinely, you know, with a staff report and public comment and all of this, and that unnecessarily prolongs the meeting. And so, and then the other part in that is both the consent calendar and during the regular part of the meeting, it's very painful to have so many substitute motions and friendly amendments, you know, some of which are just meandering and unclear. I think if you're going to propose substitute motions, they should be clearly articulated instead of rambling. I'm very much in favor of short and succinct. The other area that needs to be tightened up is in the area of council report. Now, I really do appreciate looking through the council reports because it reminds me of how much work our city council members actually do. But there are two reports that don't focus on actual council engagement. One of them is, was six pages long, and basically was an information dump of items that were readily available elsewhere and did not directly relate to council. The other report is a list of courses taken, and again, this is personal enrichment, it's not council activity. And so I would suggest tightening up those two areas in your revisions. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Carol Stanek, followed by Lisa. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, it's me again. Good evening, Mayor Mohan, council members, City Attorney Jensen, and City Manager Wu. Overall, I find the updates to the procedures to be useful and needed changes. Thank you for taking time to make our city run in an efficient and thus fiscally responsible way. We all know we're in a budget crisis. Extra staff time costs money. Making these meetings longer and more complicated is not free. I have noticed that the council meetings have dramatically improved in their efficiency since 2022. Like Jean just mentioned, I've been at meetings that lasted until the wee hours of the morning previously. The purpose for council meetings, of course, is to do the city's business, though these changes are very welcomed. However, there's still a few procedural issues preventing the meetings from running well. One of these is how items are pulled from the consent calendar during the council meeting, sometimes for simple questions, which then end up taking about an hour. If staff and other council members had advanced notice that the item would be pulled, the question perhaps could be answered quickly and efficiently before we ever got to that point. Instead, I ask that the procedure for, the request for an item to be pulled is perhaps made by noon on the day of the council meeting, instead of waiting to be on the dais. If there's a sudden need to pull an item during the meeting, then a majority vote of the council, meaning something that everyone agrees is important, would still allow this to happen. I'd also ask that this vote be made, perhaps, on what is called a privileged motion, so there isn't a long debate. We've seen in other municipalities where this is a problem. A second is managing the time of council members to speak and ask clarifying questions. Speaking time should be tracked for each council member. We actually do this on my commission right now. Perhaps the city clerk could do it. Each council member would verbally then reserve their time if they finished early. This would allow residents to be better able to be judged how long an agenda time will last, and allow all council members their fair share of speaking time. The last point I'd like to make is regarding written council member reports. Jean Bedore also mentioned this earlier. It would make sense for all council members to simply report out only on city events they attended or on meetings they attended while being a representative of Cupertino. All other information is not relevant and should be personal communications and not city communications. I encourage you to make this change to the procedures as well. These reports should not be a way to persuade people reading it, but simply report out. Thank you for considering my input and your work on behalf of Cupertino. Again, I appreciate all these changes and the consideration that you are making to make our city a more efficient place to be. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Carol Stanek, followed by Lisa, followed by Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Carol.
Hello, this is Carol Stanek. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, City Manager Wu, and City Attorney Jensen. I'm supportive of the changes made to the council procedure manual to improve council engagement and government. I have one particular issue that I would like to bring to your attention in Section 4.2, which references attendance at council meetings, and really references commission attendance at council meetings. The requirement for a commission member to represent the commission at council meeting provides a perfect opportunity for commissions to provide greater value to the council. Unfortunately, it often doesn't happen because relevant items are not always presented to the commission for input prior to the items getting reviewed by council. If council expects this clause to be effective, procedures need to be put in place to ensure that staff presents the items with full supporting materials to the commissions prior to council review. This will allow the commission to gather public input, discuss, come to the commission recommendation, and assign a member to attend the council meeting. It's all that stuff in the middle there, other than assigning a council member, a commission member to the meeting, that needs to happen, that's just not happening now. The procedure manual should address the staff and timing requirement, so commissions can comply with this clause, and council will have the benefit of the commission's input. In addition, requirements of commissioners, such as this one, should be included in the commissioner's handbook in addition to the council procedures manual. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next, we have Lisa, followed by Louise Sedadi, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Lisa.
I'm here, but I keep getting, people are breaking up, and I don't know if it's just on my end, or if everyone watching this way is not getting everything. So I'll try my best to be heard and I don't get bleeped out. This is difficult and frustrating. Transparency, ability to communicate from the public, in my opinion, is getting chipped away, chipped away, chipped away in the last year and a half. And I am, are not close to, close to a year and a half, and I am frustrated by that. I agree with all the comments Jennifer made, except one where she mentioned that there was an attempt to give two minutes to the public, and that, by a previous mayor, and that didn't bode well, so three minutes was back, and she said, unfortunately, it didn't take, but I think she meant fortunately, and I would certainly mean fortunately, three minutes was reinstated. I agree with everything Peggy has said. I agree with what Carol just said about commissions. And she said it well, and you could tell in her tone that she's frustrated, like many of us. I disagree with Jean Bedore's comments and others who agreed that council reports have information in them that is not appropriate. As the public, it's nice to see when people are doing something on their own accord, not because it's something they're supposed to do as a council member, but because they're trying to become a better council member, and it's good to know that. It gets communicated, I don't know, so if it's a problem with everyone that it's in a report, then figure out how to change it. But it's good information to have in some fashion. Taking away time from public speakers is a horrible idea. The public comment period is so very important. It's the only time we really get to say something on record that needs to be said, in our opinion. We can talk, maybe, if we can get time with someone, talk about things, not publicly, but we don't always get things resolved, and there's a need to talk more. Cutting people's time is horrible, and I will say, I heard city manager say, she's a talker. If someone from Rotary wanted to talk to her, she could talk for hours. Yet, we're gonna get three minutes from the public? What? I'm sorry if that's a bad analogy, but it's just in my brain, and it's really, really frustrating.
Thank you, Lisa. That is your time. Next, we have Louise Sedadi, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Tracy K. And Louise, you'll need to unmute yourself, please.
Mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm stuck in traffic right now, and I should be out of traffic in about two minutes. Can you have the next speaker speak first, and then I'll be in a parking spot and can speak safely, okay?
Is that okay with you, Mayor?
Can the-
Okay, all right. Okay, Louise, we will call on you last. Thank you. Next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Tracy K. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening, council members. So that means I'm not completely prepared, but I'll do my best, as always. I wholeheartedly agree with Peggy Griffin's comments. New council members and commissioners should have timely training, and also with Carol Stanek, who's talking about the commissions. You know, I'd like to remind you that the two top pillars of our council goals are transparency and public engagement. Consequently, we must not limit public comment. Which, with respect to consent counter items, you know, the reason why items are getting pulled is that the public and council members wanted to discuss them, and you can't have council members discuss these items offline, otherwise they're, they're breaking the Brown Act. So I'm just thinking that maybe the reason why we're pulling as many consent items as we are is because perhaps they should have been on the agenda. So I'm thinking that maybe there could be some guidelines about how to, how, how things get on consent. I'm also worried about the number of informational items that we want, because some, that we have right now, because some of those informational items that we've been seeing on the, on the agenda are really things that sometimes really should be discussed. So that brings me to, a shorter meeting isn't necessarily a better meeting. We mustn't measure success by time. And, you know, there had, had been efforts for reducing time. Mayor Darson Paul sent, set some successful measures in place that are still in use today to reduce the time. But again, you know, let's not limit public comment, and we have our council goals, transparency and public engagement. I have, I'm very, very sad to say that, you know, I was thinking about this today. I've lived in Cupertino for 40 years, and I have just seen a marked decline in transparency and public, and not, and opportunity for public engagement. You know, the loss of committees, commissions, and also the threat of removing public engagement. You know, I used to feel welcome in coming into the chambers, and I don't anymore. And, you know, if you look at the org chart, or in our budget, it shows that the council works for the residents, and that the staff were, you know, the staff were, are answerable to the council members. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next, we have Tracy K. Welcome, Tracy.
Hi, thank you so much. I, you know, I think it's great that people are focusing on ensuring that council meetings are civil and polite. I, you know, reading through the staff report, I did feel like there was somewhat of excessive focus, sort of as Rhoda said, on the length of time of the meeting. And you know, there's a balance, right? You know, I think people allude to previous councils where meetings went on for a long time, but you know, I would say, you know, it's like two ends of the spectrum. Right now, I actually feel like perhaps we have an excessive focus on meetings that are too short, where, you know, as a member of a public, as an outsider to all of this, I often feel like a lot of the decisions have already been made before the meeting happens, and agenda items are presented, passed with relatively little discussion. And it, you know, as a member of the public, it feels a little bit odd when almost every agenda item basically just gets passed with very little modification. And so I know that perhaps that's an effort to make the meetings efficient, but just, you know, as a note, as the member of the public, as an outsider, you know, does, is efficiency coming at the cost of feeling like decision-making is transparent, and the public is actually witnessing a decision process happening, or the decision already happened behind closed doors in order to spare meeting time? And I would say, I would think that the purpose of council meetings is somewhat of a working session. I think it's great that you get, like, basic questions cleared out of the way in study sessions and Q and A beforehand, but like, it, there's a balance, that's all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, and our final speaker will be Louise Sedadi. Okay, and our final speaker will be Louise Sadadi. We will go to Louise now. Welcome, Louise. If you would like to provide comments for this item, please unmute yourself.
Unmute.
Yes, we hear you.
Hello. Okay, awesome. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak when I wasn't stuck in traffic. So, I wanted to thank the city staff and the council. There's been a marked improvement in the efficiency and on-topic talks of, of the meeting at City Council. And while some people have gone on about, oh, public comment should go on as long as there's a, a living person willing, wanting to talk more and more, I have a 42-year career in, as a physical therapist, working in a hospital where we had many, 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 many conferences. And basically, you have to be on topic, on point, and get your point across so that the meeting could be complete in allocated time, which in the hospital setting was an hour. So, I think this calling out about people should be able to speak as long as they want to speak is just unreal in a professional- intelligent and time-deprived community, because truly, most residents cannot sit there until four in the morning to listen to somebody who just wants to hear their own voice. And it's impossible for people to misrepresent the facts when they're given unending time. And what was very disheartening to me was to have some of these same speakers who support each other say that they haven't been able to talk to the city staff, when actually it turns out after the meeting that they had spoken, and their questions had been addressed multiple times previously. And so, something that somebody says does not necessarily bring transparency. Also, I want to second what Carol Stenak had to say. Commissions really need to be given an opportunity to represent themselves at City Council and in the workings of the city. And, and also, I think- It's very important. Be working during City Council meetings, so that when people are taking up five minutes and take this part of it, and then we come back, that there be a timer, and they give limited time to find them. And then also- In terms of reports, I think that the reports should be limited to what they did, and not their own opinions, and waxing on about thoughts and opinions versus what they did in the name of the city. And finally, in terms of consent calendar, items should not be pulled five minutes.
Thank you, Louise. That is your time. And Mayor, just, that is our last speaker, but also, I just want to add for the record that Councilmember Chow arrived at 5:03 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you to all the, the public comment section is now closed, and thank you to all the speakers who participated this afternoon, this evening. And we will now bring the discussion back to council. And for, for purposes of discussion, should we, let me just reiterate what the action required of us is. It is to provide input regarding revisions to the council, City Council Procedures Manual. So, so my thinking on this, before all of us jump in, is if we have some insignificant changes, and I will let you be the judge of that, we could not take too much time discussing that, and give the city, city staff, city manager, and the city attorney leeway to include those in, in a revised document. But if there's something substantive that you want to propose in terms of changes, then we should, of course, deliberate and discuss these. So with that said, let's take comments. Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Ma'am. I, I want to really tell the public that we really listen, so I understood, shorter meetings may not be the best meetings. However, I do want to say, efficient meetings, it really means be prepared, be responsible, be on target, and doing business, but also being transparent and welcome public engagement. I really hope our public feel they're welcome, because when they come to talk, I think we're, you know, we really try to listen, and we actually really listening. You can see a lot of council members that the public said this and this. So I really want to emphasize transparency and public engagement are not satisfied when we have more efficient meetings. I want to compliment the staff to give the council members choices, options to have briefing on most of the items, so that we are prepared and responsible for our time, on everybody's time. So efficient really doesn't mean we're sacrificing transparency and public engagement. It means council members are more prepared, council members are responsible for being on target, and doing the business of the city. So that's my first comment. The second comment, I really think most of what we've done this past year are being implemented well, and this is coming back for one-year review, because that was new from last year, and was recommended by the, you know, Enterprise Leadership Report. So I, I really think this is a good time for us to do it now, but from now on, perhaps this will be just like any usual, our common procedures manuals that we will review it every two or three years for, to just refine it. I do want to say, one new item that came up, we didn't anticipate it, is we never had the time for council brief reports on council activities. So we went to council-written reports, and I feel that that has not been codified, or has not been really clarified what should be included in the council-written report. So I do like to make a, a sort of a, should I do it now, or?
Sure.
A, a real simple guidelines of what council activities report should be, because I think we're all familiar with it. It should be a brief comment and description of that, what council members done in the communities for their assignments, community involvement, that representing the city. So it's a simple couple of sentences I like to put out there to redefine what is council-written report. So this is what I've come up with. Councilmember reports shall be comprised of brief descriptions of councilmember committee assignments, attendance at city events, and other official activities representing the city, and shall not include significant discussions or personal activities. That's my brief, sort of a recommendation for this item. Thank you. And I have about two minutes left.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. And that would be something I would not be supporting, because it limits my ability to speak and inform, and I actually only have been given one assignment, so that, that should be noted. So I will be continuing to share what I've been working on. I do want to mention that Policy Number Five talks about association, memberships, and professional publications. And with regards to that, I would like to see some budget provided for the council members, and in, in my written communications, I forwarded an email that I had given to the city manager back in December, and this has been an ongoing request that I've had, that we have basically a bookshelf available for the city council, and, you know, I've got a couple of books. For example, the, this would be an AB 1600 book, Exactions and Impact Fees in California, and the California Revenue, California Municipal Revenue Sources Handbook, $35. Basically lets you know all, all of these different sources, of which there, there are many different ones, such as certificates of participation and bonds. So, I'm hoping that if we are not going to have the, a complete shelf, bookshelf, available for the council members to have as reference, that we would at least put in a dollar amount for a budget, because I have personally spent over $1,000 on books, and about $3,000 on my own education related to topics with regards to the city council. So, and in part of that, for instance, the, the environmental studies programs at De Anza actually go over Cupertino's Climate Action Plan, and the sustainability element in, within our general plan, Chapter Six, as examples, and even our guiding principles. So there, there is a nexus between the classes that are available, and this particular item and expenditures by the city council. So I, I'm hoping the council would consider that. I am hoping that with regards to Section 10, include more detailed enforcement provisions. If you recall, when we were looking at this previously, I had requested and was denied to have the San Jose policies for admonition and censorship of the council brought to our city council for review, and I also suggested Los Altos, but there's probably other cities who have these policies in place, because we don't want to have a situation where you have a, a council just basically willy-nilly removing people from their committee assignments without a, a process in place, because we need to be able to trust our fellow council members, and it's, that makes it very difficult. So I have a minute 43.
Councilmember Chow?
Oh, thank you. I think we probably should add Brown Act, Public Record Act, and Rosenberg's Rule as mandatory training to the commissioner, and also council, of course, because it, according to the supplemental report from the questions I asked earlier, these are considered administratively required training. So, and then there, we probably should clarify whether this should be done annually, or just for the first time when they were appointed. And I'm, I think it has worked out well in the last year. Yeah, there were some agenda items I feel I want to pull for a short question. The reason is, I think it's important, sometimes it's a positive item that I wish more public would know about, for example, the, the, finally, we're able to move forward with the Mary Avenue Housing. So that's why a lot of times I pull them, because I'm so happy, I want to congratulate the people who made it happen. And then, I think sometimes, yeah, we had to do more motions, but I figured usually one motion might be staff recommendation, another motion might be the other end. And like last time, I proposed a third motion, that's trying to come to a compromise in the middle, that might gain more support, so that I tried that. I think we want the council to be able to work out compromises, rather than rubber-stamp one side or the other. Regarding the activities report, when, when I worked on mine, finally, I actually realized we have been going away from how the council used to do it. The council used to not only just give a list of events, we also talk about announcement, things that's important during this. That's why the agenda item says council activity and announcement. And then I looked up the definition of activity in Google. It's the condition in which things are happening or being done, a thing that a personal group does or has done. So that's how I was trying to report, because I think we need to respect diversity here. Some council members are outgoing, they like to go to many different events, talk to people. Some council members, like me, I'm an introvert, I don't really feel comfortable to do a lot of small talks at events, that's just not comfortable. But I like to dig into policy, and when I talk to other community members about policies, those are my activities I thought I should report, because communities are reaching out to me about the transitioning to trustee area in Fremont Union, and I studied those. I feel like I have to report that. And there are other activities, like Housing Element, community members talk to me about those policies. That's my activity, I should report that. And I, I, that's to respect the diversity. Some council members like to attend many activities and have time for that. I respect them for then they're doing that, and that's not prevent other council members to have different focuses. That's to respect our different, differing abilities. That's why we have five council members elected by people, and, and some members like to attend courses. I don't have time to, for that, but I respect that, because then they will bring in more knowledge to us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Frun?
So, there are about three things that I, I really would like to see us make some changes for. Most of the, the rest of the recommendations, I understand their impetus, I understand the desire, for example, to cap total speaker time. I don't really think that that's who we are as a city, so that's not something that I would want to support. But there are, as I see it, a number of growing pains that we've been experiencing as a city. We have sort of the procedural infrastructure, or at least have had up until the last year, of a city maybe half our size, maybe a quarter of our size. We're, we're growing, we need to move with that fact. So the three things I'd, I'd really like to see us focus on are as follows. One, Councilmember Wei already touched on, which regarded the, the councilmember reports. I, I think that she is spot on in terms of the direction that she wants to go with them. There is a time and a place for talking about issues with members of the public, that is about, that is talking with members of the public about those issues. It's not in some report that looks more like a giant Brown Act violation waiting to happen. I, I think we should be striking the section on comments from councilmember reports and comments. It should simply be councilmember reports, and people can read what we've been up to. We put in the effort on it, we write it out. I try to provide links so that you can go easily to the places where, you know, if I've been repping the, the city somewhere, I, you can go and see what it is that has happened there, its agenda, the meeting, et cetera. So I think that, that's the right direction there. The second is actually something that has miraculously been happening today, which is that we have a, a significant problem with the second time that each of us speaks, or the third time, or the fourth time, in terms of trying to hold to our five minutes. So, the action that Councilmember Wei and Councilmember Moore actually just committed to, which was to announce at the end of their time that they had a certain number of minutes left, is more or less what I would like to see us do. That when you've finished your, your time speaking, that there is some sort of procedure for reserving that time, so that we all know how much time you've got left, the video team isn't having to, to record it and figure it out, we're not all lost here, and there isn't one councilmember who is dominating the discussion by virtue of simply continuing to talk. I think that would, that would put us all on a better footing with each other, and it's much more respectful to each one of us. The last is with the, the consent calendar. I think that just as a matter of respect for the staff, and the public, and other councilmembers, that if one councilmember would really like to pull something, then that should really be done by noon the day of the council meeting. That should give staff enough time to be able to have some sort of a response for any questions to why. I think the councilmember in question should provide in writing a reason for why it's being pulled, even if that reason is simply, I want to congratulate staff, for example, on a particularly well-done job. I think that's perfectly fine. If there are other things that we would like to be able to pull later on, then there's no reason that we couldn't do that by majority vote. We would just need some procedure to ensure that there is public comment that is available beforehand, so that if we catch something at the last second, because some diligent member of the public spotted a problem that we really ought to address, then we address it. But we do it, and we do it together, rather than it just being one member of, of council who is spearheading the issue. So those are my thoughts. And I have 1:20 left. And I have one twenty left.
I wanted to go back to something that a couple, a couple of members of the public raised about public comment. In general, we've always, we have not really limited the, the time for a, a member of the public to make a comment. It's been three minutes all of last year, and I think three minutes before that. The one occasion when we had to reduce it to two minutes, and, and this is something we should, we should keep in mind, if there's an overwhelming number of speakers and we are trying to get through an issue, and, so, that, that would be the time when I think the mayor, maybe the council has the prerogative to cut the meeting time from three minutes to maybe two minutes. But that would depend on the number of people speaking before the public. So, in general, we would not be doing it. So I'm not sure that's a, a major problem with our, with our council. And the very occasional times when this does happen, I, I think we could all agree that we could bring it down. We could reduce the amount of time. So there's no real intent to cut back on transparency or cut back on public comment as far as that is concerned. The other question I, I had was, I'm assuming that the, the comments relating to the commissions will be, will also be duplicated in the, in the commissioner's handbook, right? So any comment that we make as part of this discussion, which is the procedures manual, will, will show up in the commissioner's handbook discussion as well. Just going back to what I said earlier, if we could just make sure that the, the comments we raised today, that we, we consider them significant enough that we allow city manager and city attorney to incorporate them into the next version of this document, and then bring it back to council as, as a consent item. You know, it, it doesn't matter how we do it, but we don't need to do another full-blown discussion of the procedures manual today. And if we could resolve all the problems we had with the document as it stands today, then we should, so that we don't put it off to, to, to the next meeting, which starts at six forty-five or, or a future meeting. So let's try and wrap it up if we can today. Those are my comments. And Councilmember Moore, you, your light is on.
Okay, thank you. So there's been a lot of focus on meeting time when the quality of a council meeting goes far beyond the metric of time. We have never had an open-ended discussion regarding what a good council meeting looks like from a council staff or a community member perspective. And I think that that would be a conversation worth, worth having. When we take the Moss-Adams risk assessment and we simply take one item, one element there about time, when it wasn't a total quality management or Six Sigma type of discussion that they were having about, about how the, the city was being run, we are, in my opinion, we're missing the mark. We need to have a more full, robust discussion about what a good council meeting is. And it does, I agree with member of the public, it's democracy and it can get messy. And you, people need to be able to speak and feel comfortable. And when, when I look out and I, and I see two members of the public here, I'm glad you're here, but we're just not bringing them in. And we want people to feel welcome and warm to be here and, and talk and, and not feel like there's a set of rules that are particularly intimidating and, and wanting them to go away. And I think there are also, I, I really appreciate these pre-meetings that we're having, but I think there's a danger where you're going to have this, I mentioned it before, knowledge divide between the council members and the public. And, you know, I've got, I actually stacked up all of my books from home that I've been digging through, and the budget is, my budget's quite dog-eared. You end up having a, a gap. And I don't want there to be that gap because we need, there's going to be people who are going to fill our seats after us, and we need them to be equally well-informed, equally have access to, to the information that we do. I'm, again, concerned that Section 10, more detailed enforcement information provisions has not been addressed. I'm very worried that we're going to see a, a repeat about that. And then going back to Policy Number Five, I'd like to see the dollar amounts there because if I'm able to assess an amount to the city for courses I'm taking, then I most definitely would want you to have a report on what it is that I'm doing with that money. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
You have about fifty seconds left.
Yeah. I, we don't expect the staff to provide any staff report for pulled consent agenda item. Thus, it adds no value to require items to be pulled before noon. And we would have to have substantive discussion before we decide if an item should be pulled by majority. And there are times when I appreciate an item to be pulled after the, the person who pulled it, after we had a substantive discussion. So it makes no sense to have that vote before we are able to have a discussion. Thank you.
I see no other lights. Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. I think, I think I have two minutes.
Yeah, you do.
So I really want to go back to why we did it the first time, because we really want some procedures for the city to follow per the enterprise assessment. And I think we've done that. And then I want to emphasize again, efficient meetings means prepared meetings and be responsible for be on target. But welcoming to the public, as Mayor Mohan said, I, I don't believe we have limited the public comments very often. The real sudden occasions is we might have fifty or one hundred people want to make comments. And we want to respect the agenda because people come for agenda items. So I think that's allowed, actually even under Brown Act, for the mayor to limit the comments to one minute or two minutes, or even the time of public comments. I think that's a regular procedure. It's nothing special for Cupertino City Council. I really hope that our public feel welcome because I, like Mayor Mohan said, I don't think we seldom cut the three minutes of anything. I, I do want to go back to this is to be prepared and to be responsible, to be respectful of public's time and to, so that the public have time to make comment. So I want to go back to what I heard from our fellow council members on consent calendar. I fully agree, if a council member is prepared, by noon time we should know which consent calendar we want to pull. And, and I, I, I do think, and yes, if there's any public comments, we said, "Oh, we really didn't pay attention to that." Yes, we can also, with a majority vote, agree, say, "Let's put it out. Let's talk about it. We got new information." I do like that. Being prepared is what council members do. And as for the council activity reports, I do think as council members, for, this is my fourth year, I vividly remember when we were doing oral. It's very brief. We have less than three to five minutes to do it. It's really about council activities. What activities have you gone to and have a very brief report on it. So I do believe we need to stick to that. We have our own personal achievements. That's perfectly fine. Our own passion about other issues that's in others' public agencies. I just don't think it belongs in a council procedure report. So I'm going to, hopefully that what I propose could be, it's a new thing. In two years, we can come back to this, "Hey, that didn't work. Maybe we should broaden it or something." I'm not saying that's perfect. I think we're all trying to do a little bit. And my time is up. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Frun?
All right. So in, in my minute and twenty left, just very briefly, for the city attorney, do you feel like you have enough consensus and direction from us, or do you want us to reduce what we've discussed to a motion?
So I, I would recommend a, a motion so there's clear direction when this item returns to council.
Okay.
And I know there, there are a number of things that have been raised by different council members, and it would be, be preferable to get a consensus, or at least a majority. Consensus would be ideal, of course.
That, that sounds good. I will, I will add then a, a motion here in a moment. In the meanwhile, I just want to note my support of everything that, that Councilmember Wei has just said. I, I do think that fundamentally, the issue of the consent calendar is one of preparation. There are other cities where there is such a cutoff time. In San Jose, for example, at nine forty-five each day on a, on a council day, there is an agenda review for staff members of individual council members. If there is something that anyone would like to pull from the consent calendar, that is the time to make that known and to offer a reason why. It is seldom the case that you would ever be able to pull anything other than during orders of the day, and that would be on consensus of council. So with that, I will send a motion momentarily to the city clerk, and I will ask to be recognized at that time.
Councilmember Chow, your light is on. Councilmember Wei?
I'd like to make a motion. So, should I?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Frun is making.
Just, just one second, Councilmember Chow. Vice Mayor is working on it.
If Councilmember Chow would like to make a motion, she is welcome to make a motion.
I'll write it down.
Councilmember Wei, is your light on? Did you have?
I apologize.
Yeah, Councilmember Moore?
I don't, so I'm, I'm technically out of time. I don't know if you've given a second round. But with regards to pulling items that are on consent, I know this afternoon, I, I wished I could pull an informational item off because going back over through the items, I found something that looked like it needed to be addressed, and it was on informational items. And I wish that we had a mechanism to be able to pull informational items for discussion if we find some, some irregularity within a report. And, and I did turn in a written communication on it, but it will, that item will never be discussed because we apparently have no mechanism of, of having discussions there. And I do think that that, you know, once in a while, we might, might need to have that ability within the agenda item. So informational items was added in with this new procedure, and we are not allowed to discuss them unless, I guess, for the council, if I want to talk about this item, I would need to pull a speaker card at the start of the meeting and go to the podium. And I'd like to make, I'd like to have that clarified, too. It's like, how, how do I get to speak about, about an informational item?
Could we also put it on a future, as a future agenda item?
Yeah, if there was a desire to discuss an informational item further, the future agenda item procedure would be available to the council.
Through the mayor. But for that, for that day, members of the public can speak to the informational items during oral communications. And if a city council member wanted to speak to an informational item, the only way that I would be able to do that would be to pull a speaker card. Is that correct?
So it was, it would be on the agenda. So I, I guess theoretically, you could pull a speaker card. I, I wouldn't see, as long as it's on the agenda, I wouldn't see anything that prohibits that.
Again, through the mayor. But I would have to do that, I would have to speak during oral communications, just like the members of the public. Because they aren't allowed to speak during, you know, it's, it's item eleven. They're not allowed to speak on item eleven when eleven shows up on the agenda. They have to talk during oral communications.
Yeah, I, I've never considered that eventual, eventuality, but I, I guess it could be possible.
Okay, so I'll be doing that in six forty-five. Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, since they're still writing, I'm, I'm totally confused. If council members, we're council members, we're elected. If we want to talk about a item, we need to agendaize so that public knows that we're talking about it. I'm confused of, Councilmember Moore wants to be a public, to talk about it as a council member. I, I'm just really confused. Sorry. Another agenda item.
Again, I haven't, I haven't really given it much consideration. I was not anticipating that.
Okay, where are we on the, on the motion? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Frun?
Mayor, I have, I have received the vice mayor's motion. I can share my screen.
Please.
Okay, I'm sharing it now. Might take a moment to pull up. There, I believe it's appearing now.
Vice Mayor, could you read it out?
Sure. So the motion would be that the city attorney return to council with the following revisions to the council procedures manual. First, to revise procedures for pulling consent calendar items by A, establishing a cutoff time of noon on the day of a council meeting for council members to unilaterally remove items from the consent calendar; B, requiring any council member pulling a consent calendar item unilaterally to make the request in writing and provide a reason why; C, that council would reserve the right to pull consent calendar items after noon on the basis of majority vote, and that we would want you to harmonize that with the opportunity for public comment; Two, add a procedure for council members to reserve their remaining time for council discussion and questions after the first time they speak so that there's no confusion as to how much time council members have left; And Three, that we shift council member reports to informational items and clarify what such reports should include, specifically to require that reports focus on council committee assignments and ceremonial appearances as described by Councilmember Wei, and remove the reference to council member comments.
If I could ask a quick question, Vice Mayor. What would be the difference when we move the council member reports to informational items? What does that allow us to do and what does, does it not allow us to do?
So right now, it, it sits sort of on, on the council agenda in a vestigial location that references a period of time when we used to do these all orally. And so it seems like there is no need for that any longer. The appropriate place, therefore, to put it would be in informational items.
Okay.
All right, through the mayor.
It's basically an informational item, but the way we have it now.
Correct.
Do you need a second?
Yes, I would need a second.
I'll second that. May I have a friendly amendment?
You have a friendly amendment?
Yes. I'll second with a friendly amendment is to, oh, I need to see that. Sorry.
Sorry. Let me share that again. Okay, it should appear.
Is, except to report to the information item just as a separate item, so that council member report activities in written. I think it's good to separate that into the information item and council active reporting a specific place so people want to look for it can look for it. So written council member reports as a separate item.
Okay.
That would be my friendly amendment. It could be before information handle or after, depends on how the city manager wants to put it on the agenda.
I'll be happy to accept that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Councilmember Chow, where are we on your motion? No?
Yeah, I'll share my writing. Wait, where is the button? Okay, here. Okay.
So is this a substitute motion?
This is a substitute motion. I'm following the tradition of study session. In this study session, individual council members have proposed revisions which were never discussed before. So I'd like the council to direct the staff to collect all the input from council and bring them back as options for the council to make final decisions after listening to public input on this, especially newly proposed revisions. Thank you.
Moore, is there a second?
Through the mayor. Yes, a more second. Yeah. And then there were comments from the public regarding Section 4.2, how that will be implemented to ensure that you have the commission members at our meeting. I, I don't know if there was enough language in there, but I, I really liked the idea to, to gather all the information up and bring it back. all the information up and bring it back.
Okay. Councilmember Chow, you still have your light on? Okay, let's vote by light on the first substitute motion.
Through the mayor, may I have a little discussion on the substitute motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, can I have...
Go ahead.
You want to give us two minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe one minute.
One minute, okay. So I'm looking at this, I think Councilmember Chow wants to come back and re-discuss these issues with another option. I really want to emphasize, this is a revision of the annual, and then we will come back in a couple of years to do it. And if I remember correctly, when Councilwoman Frun asked city attorney, it would be, you would like us to give you directions, clear directions, instead of coming back to another lengthy discussions. Is that what your preference is?
So, I mean, ultimately, it's council's decision how it wants to manage the debate. I think as far as moving the discussion forward, you know, having relatively clear direction would allow the city attorney to bring this item back in a streamlined forum, ideally as a consent item, so, you know, council could move on to other business. You know, but, you know, if council feels that more discussion is warranted, we could certainly bring it back for more extended discussion.
Through the mayor, can I have one more question? Yes, so about the council procedures manual, about the commissioners, are we going to put that into the commissioners' manual, or this is a place to discuss it?
Specifically, the question about commissioner attendance.
Representing attending the city.
So the commissioners, there is a requirement in the current procedures manual that commissioner representatives should attend, a commissioner representative should attend council meetings if an item where the commission is making a recommendation has been discussed. I think, you know, at least in my view, the current manual addresses that concern, but perhaps there's, you know, administrative and coordination issues that are giving rise to some of the comments we've seen from the public. But, you know, council could obviously make changes to the procedures manual if it wants to address those concerns.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for the extra time. I will actually make another substitute motion.
Go ahead.
I would like to make the substitute motion for the first motion, but adding the fourth item for the city manager, city attorney to add the public comments, comments on the procedures, on the commissioners appearing at city council meetings, so that it's more clear. It gives more clearer picture of how commissioners should and how they appear in the city council, incorporating the comments from the council and the public. That would be my fourth item added to the original first Vice Mayor Frun's motion to be the second substitute motion.
I'll second that with the understanding that it is the original motion plus the addition you just added.
Councilmember Chow?
Shouldn't that be a friendly amendment rather than another substitute motion? Because I already made a friendly amendment, I feel that I'll just do a substitute motion. Okay, I have a question regarding the activity report. So would we still be making oral report in case there is time, or we would not be doing any oral reporting? Because the public has just mentioned they would prefer we do some. So we will not be, okay?
Yeah. I think the reason we brought it back as a written council report was because it was taking up too much time, and this was, and our meetings were going late, and it was just one of those things that conveyed the same information, but in a written form.
Okay, so just want to clarify. So we are expecting this proposal to be almost final because it will be brought back on the consent agenda, and likely we don't want people to pull it. And if the public disagree with any of these newly proposed revisions, they should be quiet? I'm confused.
Vice Mayor Frun?
Once again, we still have rules with regard to pulling things off of consent, so if for some reason someone feels that it needs to be pulled, that can always be done.
Through the mayor, I don't think we, our motion says come back as a consent. The motion doesn't say come back as a consent. It could be come back as a...
It will come back, but...
Right, it just says come back.
But the intent is not to have another discussion on the council procedures when we do come back, because anything substantive needs to be discussed today. Otherwise, and keep in mind, this handbook, like other reports, will come back from time to time. And what was the plan, Mr. City Attorney, to bring it back once a year?
So there has been no council direction on the frequency at which it would return. You know, I would recommend revisiting this at a two- to three-year frequency at this point. Obviously, if there was something that wasn't working well, council could look at that more quickly. And, you know, of course, council could, I mean, council could certainly spend more time talking about this at some point. You know, it's sort of balancing the amount of time you spend discussing sort of your own procedures for how you manage your deliberations, which with, you know, everything else that's facing the city, which, you know, certainly, you know, we're all aware that there's serious problems. And so, I mean, we are trying to strike that balance, but ultimately, it's, you know, it's up to council as to how, you know, how you want to approach it.
Okay. And do you feel you have enough information about some of the points that the public brought up and which would not be major changes to the document, that it could be easily included?
Yeah, no, I don't think it would be major changes to the document. I would, since I've been given the opportunity to, you know, to maybe clarify with Councilmember Wei, which, what provisions regarding commissioner attendance at council meetings, what would she like to have clarified?
Okay. Did you want to address that?
Is that catching for me now? Oh, yeah, and actually, I would love for you to incorporate the public comments from Carol's netnet of how to, you know, how to make it more clear that they, their expectations, that they, I don't know how to say it. I think there is a little confusing right now, when they come back, what they come back, how they really being asked to come back, or so maybe tighten up a little bit. I do believe we had more than one comment on that, so maybe somehow you can incorporate that, make sure it's a clearer description of how they come back to us to report.
Okay, I think, I think that gives some context for the request.
Okay, and remember, we will discuss this again in the commissioner's handbook section, so we can clarify anything that wasn't done this time. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So we're going to be, what you're, the suggestion of the original motion is that as you go through the agenda, you would get to the city manager report, which is a video, but now, and we haven't really been speaking to these council member reports, now we, it's a mute item. It's put under informational items, intended to provide background information and routine reports without discussion by the council. So there, no matter what interesting things went on, nothing is going to be said. Additionally, if with the rigid and constraining reporting that you are suggesting, if that is, if that, which is somewhat ambiguous, if that's not adhered to, there's no process for punishing a council member for having a paragraph about something that someone decides is too tangential to their informational report, because Item 10 has been, for some reason, refused to be looked at to have policy and procedure.
Councilmember Wei?
Through the mayor, I think I do believe the substitute motion is to have a separate council written reports and not to have it put in the information item. And I do believe that we don't want to censor ourselves. If we have a clear description, this is about council activities, commissions report activities in the community representing the city, I'm hoping our council members would adhere to that, because for the years I've been in council, it's been oral report on council activities and committee reports, brief report. It's always been brief, it's never been a big piece of opinions, so I'm hoping that we don't need censor or actions that our council members are conscientious and be responsible and knowing what this procedures manual is asking.
So just in terms of what you said, Councilmember Moore, about we not having any ability to discuss the council member reports, we have not had that in the last one year. Ever since it became a part of the written reports, part of the written report, we've never really discussed it. It was just meant to be informational and just a listing of activities that we participated in as members of the city council. So that hasn't changed in the last one year, and this report, this procedures manual doesn't intend to make any changes there either. Go ahead.
So my concern is, for instance, this past weekend, I was studying, learning about the Superfund sites, how to look things up, how to look up PFAS, PFOS and PFOA, how to look at all of that, and if I were to mention that in my report, I now have the potential for the one committee I have, I'm going to be removed from because I have a paragraph about something I was excited about that I put in my report. Shame on me. So, and so that's where I get concerned, that you don't have a process for punishment of the council members, and there's this refusal to put that in. That was Item 10, and it continues to go on, and that's what happens when you, you know, you refuse to put in a process and a procedure for that. And we witnessed it last year, and I could see this going into a free speech problem where you're going to have to defend why you've, you know, punished a council member, and is it really going to be because they had a paragraph being excited about something they learned? You know, can take it to its conclusion.
I don't think there's any intent to punish or censure or take any action. This is entirely up to city council members. We write a report. If you, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, if you feel that this is the best way to represent yourself by including what you have been including, I'd say go ahead.
Through the mayor? Actually, I would say my opinion is not go ahead, because I, you know, I'm a rotarian. I have hundreds of activities I'm worried that I'm excited about. I don't report that, that's not a city council report. And I, you know, I'm passionate about mental health, so if I go to take a mental health issues, our city cares about us through the mental health. I'm passionate about it, I love it, should I put it on the report? I think we need to stick to our city issues. This is a city council members' report, a city activities related, in the communities related, representing the city. You gain proclamations, or they said they love to city council member to participate. It is a city council activities report. So I really hope that our fellow council members are not using this as another elaborate report. This goes to the public records. I'm hoping that we are sticking ourselves to our job, be responsible, and we don't need to censor ourselves or each other about it. That is, my intention is not to defer anybody's passions or interests, your self advancement, those are very commendable, but we all have different passions, different actions, different things. If we all put into the city activities, it's going to be a little jumbo mumble, and I do believe that we are responsible for the election, that we've been elected to this position, that we represent the city. So I would think not go ahead, so that's just my comment.
Councilmember Chow?
So for context, the council announcement and activity report item has never been before to be just a list of events you attend. It evolved into that way because we were limited to one minute, and earlier, it wasn't like that, just for context. And I didn't have a chance to comment on my own motion, but now that there is a second substitute motion, I hope to comment on my own motion. Given that there is actually a lot of fuzzy things to figure out, I think in the past, the city attorney has done a really good job of, after a study session, collect a list of options, and in the staff report, he makes recommendations for some of the options, but still kept some of the options open. And then when we had the meeting, the public then can provide input on this. I think we can see that there is, we are not sure about the commission, reporting to the council, or whether items should be referred to the commission. These are still fuzzy, and the activities report, we are still trying to define it. I think you are trying to define it right now as if you know in the past one year, but that's not the history of how this item has been. So maybe that's just have the attorney collect options, and when it comes back, the staff, of course, can make recommendations. And, yeah, thank you. That's my motion, so I hope that the council supports it.
Okay, where are we with the motions? City Attorney, did you want to say something?
There are three motions on the table. The second substitute motion should be voted on first, Mayor.
Yeah, and what is the second substitute motion? If we could have it on the screen?
Yes, I will, I probably need a little bit of confirmation from Councilmember Wei.
So... Councilmember Wei, you wanted to...
It is, it is...
Think she's got the language?
Vice Mayor Frun's original motion, I believe Item 3 was amended to separate the council, leave the council reports separate. And then you added a fourth item. Tell me if this is correct, please. Add the public comments on the procedures relating to commissioners appearing at the council meeting?
Is sufficient for...
Through the mayor, if I can clarify on Item 4, just so that we're all understanding. So we've received a number of emails on this topic. I think what has been asked is if the commissioner or the commission chair for that commission just had a recommendation to council. So for instance, Audit Committee received a report last week, and the item's coming to council. So council would like to see that commissioner coming to that council meeting following their recommendation. Is my understanding correct?
I thought there was a provision in the council procedures manual, talk about the commissioners coming to report, and that's not clear. So according to some of the commissioner chairs, and they would like to have a more clearer definition of how they come here and what they do.
Yeah, no, so, yeah, so I think I understand the request. I mean, I think the provision is clear, but the procedure for actually making that happen perhaps needs to be elaborated upon, and so that will be the thrust of the revisions, if I'm understanding council's, your motion correctly.
Right, through the mayor, I think that's what my motion is about.
Okay.
I just want to make one more comment.
Yeah.
I think we're doing this because we don't have time for oral reports. And if I remember correctly, the first three years I was, we have very brief reports. Vice Mayor Paul would cut off in two minutes, you have two minutes or three minutes. So this is actually an enhancement of what we've done before. We never had time to really report what we did, but it really needs to stick to city activities.
Okay, all right, let's vote on the...
So I think the intent was to capture what Carol was proposing or her concern was. I think this, the fourth item, didn't really capture that. I think the essence of her comment was, there are some items that's under the purview of the commission, but somehow the specific item didn't even go through the commission to get the commission input. So she was asking for a clarification of the procedure, so that more, that the items should be going to the commission to get feedback, and so that they can provide council input, because they haven't been going to commission, they didn't even have a chance to provide a report to the council. That was, I thought...
a chance to provide a report to the council. That was, I thought, what Kara was trying to address.
Through the mayor, that is not what I put it on the motion. It, the motion is specifically to commissioner appearing at the city council meeting.
Right.
And that, I think, is already addressed in the current handbook.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and vote on the second, on the motion that's before us.
The second substitute motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
Okay. Okay, yeah. So that's it. Should we take a recess? Five minutes? 10 minutes?
6:45.
15 minutes, 14 minutes. Thank you.